Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, May 16, 2011. This evening, City Council is meeting in regular session. We have six of seven members present. The next item on our agenda is disposition of council meeting minutes from the regular session held April 18 and the special session held April 25. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. All in favor? Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Communications, Member Sands.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I would like to move that we accept the April financial reports from the Auditor's Office. They have been placed in the Council office for us.
Motion and second, further discussion. All in favor? Opposed? The reports from the Treasurer has been accepted, from the Auditor, sorry, has been accepted. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile.
I have a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the challenge by choice, including Jim. This is a disability commission, which is a city commission. They want to give an opportunity for citizens and members of the community to experience what it is to have a disability. It was last Friday. It turned out pretty well. Also, I'd like to thank all the police officers and city workers that helped us with the festival this weekend. Turned out not too bad, I think. Let's see, I want to mention that the Planning Commission is going to be meeting 7:00 PM this Wednesday coming up. I think I mentioned it last time, but just to reiterate, this is for the sign ordinances. It's not really a formal public hearing, but we're looking for public input. Last week, I mentioned that there would be a police community dialogue, and it says next Monday, May 23. Let's see, I said it was going to be at City Hall. It's actually going to be Christ the King Parish on Mill Street, the church on, the church or parish on Mill Street. And it's at, well, shoot, 17:30 hours, that's 5:30, I believe, right? That type of time. Also, we're going to have the International Street Fair coming up. And the reason why I mention that, that's this Saturday coming up. But at the staff meeting, there's discussion about when to put bags on the meters and take the people off the cars off the street. What's going to happen is that on Friday afternoon, they're going to be putting bags on the meters to remove the parking van. I guess the dialogue at the staff meeting was, many times, people park overnight, cars stay there, and we have to tow them. So, the inconvenience of having clear streets versus towing people, I think we're going to go with the afternoon, what is it, restriction of parking on Court Street for the International Street Fair. That's pretty much all I have, but as I say, these are things I just wanted to mention.
Questions or comments for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Hack.
No report.
Okay. City Law Director Patrick Lang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to give a brief update on a couple of cases that we've gotten rulings down from in the last couple of weeks since council last met. And they're both issues that the city's been dealing with for quite some time. In fact, the one issue arose shortly after I came into office, and the other issue actually began before I was in office. The first issue being city tap fee ordinance, and that the court has upheld our tap fee ordinance, which was being challenged in the Palmer Place case. So, that should, the judgment in that case for $134,000, that should be being paid to the city sometime soon. And then the other case being the three-wide entertainment case for the proposed business down at Stimson Avenue. And in that case, the court has basically, this was one which a zoning application permit, a application for a zoning permit had been put in in December of 2007, and we've been basically dealing with that issue since with the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the court could have ordered in that case that the BZA grant the permit. The court did not order that, but rather said it has to go back before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a rehearing, and so we expect that that will happen in June. And then finally, I also wanted to share with council a communication which I received from Charles Murray Rose, who has spoken before council on a couple of occasions. And I had told him that I would pass along his remarks, or his, yeah, his remarks, I guess, to the rest of council, and he would like that the ordinance dealing with the carbon monoxide detectors, I would like to have the effective date of that moved up. And so, I thank him for his communication and apologize that I told some members of council, but I realized I hadn't made, I may as well just make it a public statement, and so you've all been so informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments for the Law Director? On to ordinances for third reading. I'm sorry. Mary Ann, I'm sorry, I missed you. City Treasurer Mary Ann McClure.
Hi, Mr. President. I just came tonight to report the first quarter interest earnings of $22,213.46. It's a modest amount due to low interest rates and because none of the CDs had rolled over yet by the end of March, so we'll have more next time.
Well, it does look like January, February, March, it's steadily going down, and I was watching the interest rates today on CNBC, and they're going down again.
Yeah, it's not good. I've been negotiating for some longer term that I can pull up every year. And attached, you'll also find the first three months back reconciliations for your information.
Thank you. Questions or comments for the Treasurer? I apologize for missing you. Now on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 4311 is an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of 4311. And this is an ordinance that moves nine, eight vehicles and one speed monitor, and will make it available for auction or also to nonprofit organizations. So, the city is disposing of these items.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4411 is an ordinance authorizing construction of the Carriage Hill Bridge rehabilitation, which is project number 261. Again, Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4411. And this construction of the Carriage Hill Bridge is a bridge at the bottom of the Carriage Hill Apartments on Richland Avenue on the south side of town. It will be replaced this summer. It's a total of $180,000 project, and will come through as part of our street rehabilitation funds.
Member Sands.
Let me just make a comment that the mayor made earlier in our discussion. Actually, the city owns the driveway all the way to the top of the Carriage Hill Apartments, so this, we're not actually doing work on, as some people had thought, we're not doing work on a private, on a private bridge. It's our roadway there.
Other comments? Mayor Wile.
I'd also point out that most of the time when I look at this, I think it's a culvert, but I guess the ratio spans the width and it makes it a bridge. Also, if you look at the whereas, it says, "The city intends to utilize construction funds expended on the Carriage Hill Bridge rehabilitation project to be used as ODOT credit for the credit bridge program." In other words, this will be part of our match with the 2012 Oxbow Bridge, the upper bridge of Richland. So, we're footing a bill for this one, but it will go towards our rebuild of the next one. Not entirely, I don't think it will cover all that match, since it's a pricier bridge up at the top. But again, this is one way we're going to leverage the money to go a little bit further.
Good idea.
Another project on Richland, too, all in all.
Other comments? All those in favor of the ordinance? Opposed? Ordinance 4411 is adopted. Ordinance 4511 is an ordinance amending ordinance 13409 authorizing preliminary engineering of the Richland South Project, number 244. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4511. Thank you. This ordinance is actually amending an ordinance that the city passed in 2009. And what it does is changes, the amendment is actually changing the amount that we are authorizing for the preliminary engineering of the project. And that's what it does, changes the amount.
Very good. Further discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance? Opposed? Ordinance 4511 is adopted. On to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 4611 is an ordinance amending ordinance 100-10 authorizing a contract with Perfection Group, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we consider ordinance 4611 under suspension of the rules? Suspension because this does amend previous ordinance and authorizes a contract which as part of it states that we need to pay bills as work is done, and we received actually invoice back in February that we've been holding till this passes, so we'd like to make that payment as soon as possible.
Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on 4611? Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 4611.
Second.
Again, this is paying a bill for some contract work that we previously authorized. Again, as in the ordinance that Ms. Nysley just read, we have amended the amount, but we do need to pay the bill.
Other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Ordinance 4611 is adopted. Now, we move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 4711 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for the COPS Hiring Recovery Grant Program and declaring an emergency. Member Coon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to consider ordinance 4711 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for this suspension is that there's a very narrow window of opportunity to apply for this grant. It was only announced the 1st of May, and the application has to be in by May 24.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 47? Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 4711. We are applying for two police officers, and we're applying for two because this increases our chances of getting at least one. However, if we are awarded two and we cannot afford two at that time, we can accept one and not accept the other one, and the other one would be awarded to a different agency. This grant would cover entry-level salaries and benefits for three years.
Okay. Other comments? Mayor Wile.
Again, we're going to have turnover. We defunded, we basically de-staffed ourselves one position last December, so this would bring us up a little bit to where we had it last year. If we get the grant award for two of them, then we'd have to change the staffing level at that time. Whereas, because I think we tried this in 2009, we were not awarded any positions at that time. The commitment is for three years' pay, and I have, if I'm reading the back sheet correctly, a minimum of 12 months after that, so we would be committing ourselves to one year more. I thought it was two years, but it says one here. It's, I think it's a good chance to see where our economy goes in three years, four years, and if not, we probably need the positions anyway.
Other comments? All those in favor of ordinance 4711? Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4811 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a new dump truck for the Public Works Department. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed in Transportation Committee last week, this particular ordinance authorizes the city to purchase a one-ton dump truck, and this will replace one of the trucks that is, was just being disposed of in our earlier ordinance this evening. It's replacing a 25-year-old dump truck, so it's sorely needed. We'll be able to use this particular truck all year long, because it will have a heated bed that will enable us to do asphalt repair in early spring, and it will also have a salt dispensing attachment to it. And the cost of the truck will be $85,000.
Other comments? All those in favor of ordinance 48? Sorry, first reading, we did not suspend. You get on a roll here. Thank you, Member Nysley. Ordinance 4911 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Dad Chapter 3.11 Domestic Registry. Member Sands.
Mr. President, we talked about this ordinance in committee last week, and I'll just reiterate some points. We're talking about registration of domestic partnerships. Domestic partnership for the purpose of this ordinance means the nonmarital relationship of two adults of the same or different sects who share a common residence and affirm that they share responsibility for each other's common welfare and have signed and filed a declaration of domestic partnership with the city. Sharing a common residence means that both domestic partners share the same residence. However, it is not necessary that they both have title to the property where they reside. And this registration, this registry would be handled in the Service Safety Director's Office, working through the mayor. It would be a notarized statement. There would be a fee involved. It would be a $25 fee for signing up on this registry. And we do want to make sure that nothing in this ordinance should be construed as recognizing or treating a declaration of domestic partnership as a marriage or a legal status that intends to approximate the significant significance or effects of marriage. In other, in other words, this registry has no legal bearing at this point. It is a, just a declaration of two individuals who want to declare that they have the concerns that are expressed in this language.
Other comments? Anyone wishing to speak to this issue? Ordinance, let's see, 5011 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13 General Offenses, Dad 13.02.07 Intimidation. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similarly, this ordinance was discussed in committee last week as well, and I think in the spirit of harmony and inclusion and tolerance, that's the underlying thoughts here. Similarly, to create a safe community and to ensure the rights of all individuals are protected. So, this particular ordinance addresses the hate crimes and definition of intimidation, and there's four sections there which go into more detail about that. Again, that's the spirit behind this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other comments? Ordinance 5111 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Washington, and State Streets from 7:00 AM on Saturday, July 16 to 1:00 AM on Sunday, July 17 for a family music festival, Boogie on the Bricks, and Ohio Brew Week, suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, Section 130410, unnecessary noise in the downtown area, and Title 7, Section 7.05.26B1, city garage metered parking rates and regulations, and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Perhaps before I talk, I will double-check, is there any need to suspend this, or are we on time, we're okay? Okay? Okay, thank you for the clarification. Again, we discussed this in committee last week. This is to celebrate the Boogie on the Bricks Festival, which is now an annual event, along with Ohio Brew Week. These are both family-oriented events. The basic points to be made here are closing Court Street off, banning parking on Court Street and Washington Street. There is a suspension of the noise ordinance that evening and afternoon, as well as suspension of the metered parking garage, so that it'd be free for people participating and attending to park in the garage. Again, this is an annual event that I believe is, I think, was it the sixth or seventh year? Is that what was noted last week?
I think so, at least.
Continues to grow and attract people from within the community and the local area, as well as people from out of state. Thank you.
Other comments? Ordinance 5211 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V Public Utilities, Dad Chapters, Add Chapter 5.07 Stormwater Regulations. Member Bain.
Mr. President, 5211 is on the agenda because EPA has suggested that this is the next stage in our efforts to work toward clean water. In this case, stormwater is under, is the item that we're going to be controlling. The requirements we have not had to face up until this point, but now we will. More education in this one than in the Clean Water Act. But the ordinance that you see, 5211, was reviewed from the EPA boilerplate by Paul Logue and Andy Stone, and I believe Ron Lucas, and they worked to try and make sure that our existing ordinances were compatible with it, and they've assured me that it is. And I, they're not incompatible, and that's a positive. And as we read on then, 53, we'll talk about tap fees, I think, and then we also have a charge associated with this new utility, which takes care of the water from the streets to the river. And I don't know where it'll end up, but this is something we now have to do.
Other comments on ordinance 52? Ordinance 5311, an ordinance amending ordinance O2709 to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code. Again, Member Bain.
Mr. President, we have a relatively simple solution to the problem of how to accumulate enough money to do the tasks that we will be required to do, and that specifically is each residential user will have $2 added to the sewer fee, and it will be going into a sewer fund, a stormwater utility fund. Commercial, $4; industrial, $4. Those are, those are designations that were, that are on people's bills, so you'll know what's going on as you see that. There will be some modification of this, probably additional modification as time goes by, but fundamentally, this is the charge.
Other comments on ordinance 53? Ordinance 5411 is an ordinance amending ordinance O12310 and Athens City Code Title V Water and Sewer Regulations. Again, Member Bain.
Mr. President, I neglected to say that we did discuss this last meeting, and then before that, six months ago, eight months ago. But we have actually a reduced tap fee. Isn't that amazing? Where we're going to be charging 10 cents per 2,500 square feet of impermeable surface on each residential structure. So, that amounts to about $250, and that will be the charge to tap into the stormwater fee. We put this in initially with just a, an initial charge, and now we have one. That's kind of the focus, that if you, if you pave your entire backyard, you're going to be over 2,500 square feet, and so eventually, there will be a charge for such pavement, because it makes the water go into the river much more quickly and carries lots of unacceptable material with it. So, that's it.
Other comments on ordinance 54? Ordinance 5511, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $750,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is a, actually, a recurring event that we have, have to deal with since we borrowed money to pay for the construction of the four lanes of East State Street and the improvements that came with it. When we borrow money, we go through a bond issuance, and this is exactly what this ordinance is talking about. Auditor, do you have some additional information?
I guess the only thing I would add to this, that what we are using to pay down on these bonds are the tip payments we get from East State Street area. So, we are paying $250,000 down this year.
Good.
Paid $200,000 last year.
It's going fast.
It is.
Other comments on ordinance 55? Ordinance 5611, an ordinance amending Athens City Zoning Code Title 23 to include sweepstakes/internet cafe businesses uses. Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked about this particular ordinance a couple committee meetings ago. This is to address the new phenomenon of sweepstakes and internet cafe businesses. Basically, Section 1 identifies Title 23, Chapter 2304, as being amended. Basically, it's defining where sweepstakes/internet cafe businesses can be located within the city, how far they have to be buffered from certain uses, and which zones they can be located, which includes B3 Planned Unit Developments and M Zones. Section 2 amends the city code, the zoning code Title 23, Chapter 2310, which is basically definitions, so it defines what an internet sweepstakes café is. And then, Section 3 amends Table B of Title 23, which is basically identifying the parking requirements for such a business. I'd like to note that on June 6, there'll be a public hearing about this at 7:00 in this room, and business regulations and licensure and fees will come, ordinance will come later in June.
Other comments? Member Sands.
I'm sorry. This recommendation came
From the Planning Commission.
From the Planning Commission before us. It has been discussed, and we will discuss it again.
Anyone else wishing to comment on ordinance 56? On to a one-reading resolution. Resolution 1211, a resolution supporting the Community Access Preservation Act, also known as the CAP Act. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I think I'll just, I'll just read this resolution. Whereas public, educational, and government, known as PEG channels, play a significant role in the City of Athens, and whereas PEG channels are a unique and valuable resource for local information and discourse for the residents of the City of Athens, and whereas PEG channels televise local government meetings, including City Council, Planning Commission, Border Zoning Appeals, Shade Tree Commission, mayor's press conference, so that citizens are informed about the actions taken by local elected officials, and whereas PEG channels contribute to the democratic process by providing opportunities for candidates and others to discuss local issues during election campaigns, and whereas it is important to preserve PEG channels and funding for PEG channels, and to ensure that the channels, such as the government channel, Athens Community, and Athens Community Television, continue to be available to the entire community to serve the residents of Athens, and whereas the Community Access Preservation Act addresses critical and immediate threats to PEGs. Now, therefore, let it be resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Athens County, Ohio, that Athens City Council does hereby support the immediate passage of the Community Access Preservation Act. Athens City Council calls on our congressional delegation to take all possible actions in support of the passage of the Community Access Preservation Act, including, but not limited to, endorsing, co-sponsoring, and voting for the Community Access Preservation Act, and to work for its rapid, its rapid passage. This resolution shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor. This is a one-reading resolution. This is, the Community Access Preservation Act is a congressional, proposed congressional act, and we are simply supporting its passage.
Other comments? Mayor Wile.
So, I assume once the resolution is passed, we will send it to our representatives? Is that the intention?
We will instruct the clerk to do such.
Okay. And just anecdotally, I talk to other mayors in other cities. We have a very robust community action PEG system here. I'm having a conversation with them. I was always aware of the education department because I was always aware of the Education Department because of Ohio University, but the public part, of course, with Channel now 9, was 23, and this is going over the air right now. It's exceptional for many, and the other cities don't see this. So it makes us unique in that sense. We're lucky, we have actually this form of communication that's out there.
And this is an effort to preserve what the mayor's is talking about.
I couldn't agree more. When I've lived on the road as a regional person for years, I would always, whatever town I was in, turn on access TV or their government channels just to see how they did it. And I've never seen it done much better than what it's done here in Athens, and you know, the access that this gives to, well, everybody that takes an interest in it is pretty phenomenal. You cannot go to the farmer's market and not talk about what goes on at city government if you're an elected official. People know, and they do tune in, and it's only good for democracy. So I don't know much that is bad with government, that a good dose of sunshine doesn't cure, and this is about the best sunshine I know to do. So a lot of people well before me worked very hard to make sure that the government access and public access TV was well done, and I think the guys and gals here that do it every week do a great job. So with that, any other comments on Resolution 1211?
I move that we accept resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. Announcements and other businesses? Any announcements anyone wishes to make?
I'd like a committee meeting.
Next week?
Next week.
Other committee meetings?
I understand that we'll likely have some finance and personnel issues.
Oh, it'd be a rare week for ten, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would be.
Yeah. Okay, any other announcements anyone wishes to make? We move on to an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that was not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight? Please. Please do. State your name and address, and you're welcome to speak for up to three minutes.
My name's Martin Garrus. I've been a resident of Athens, Ohio, for three years, and I've attended Ohio University. Since last Friday, May 13th, I parked my car on Oak Street, which I had parked for the entire year, and my car was towed. After returning from class around 5:00 or 6:00 p.m., I immediately had no idea why my car wasn't there. I spotted a group of police officers on Mill Street. I asked what had happened to my car. They told me that 10 to 15 cars had been towed, and that more than likely, mine was one of them. I didn't understand why my car had been towed, so I was not parked illegally in a yellow painted curb, where there were no arrows to indicate that I was parked illegally. I have pictures that verify this, that I took Saturday morning, and the, so, I was, I believe that, oh, right here. When I asked the police officer why the car had been towed, he pointed to a sign that said there was no parking on this side of the street. The sign did clearly indicate that it was Oak Street. It was on the corner of Mill and Oak. So this was the only new sign that had been added, and he told me that it was added on Friday morning. So I was wondering how that is just that I was towed Friday afternoon when a sign had been added Friday morning. After I discussed this with my father, who's a judge and Dayton, I was concluded, I had concluded that this act was unjust, and then I decided to come here and to speak to you about this action. I believe that the tow charge and the police release form was unjust action, and that I would like to have an explanation from the city league's office, city's legal office, and the chief of police on this matter.
What I would suggest you do is contact the mayor maybe tomorrow.
Contact the mayor?
And see if you can work something out, and if you do not receive some sort of satisfaction, maybe go see the law director, and then come see us again if you still don't see. I'm not too sure there's a lot that this legislative body can do that the administrative body possibly can.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
That's the mayor. He lives on the first floor of this building.
All right, thank you.